Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our special committee of the whole for January 30. I just want to start by acknowledging that we're gathered on the traditional territories of the coast and straight sailors people, specifically the La Cuenca speaking people known today as the Songhais and the Esquimalt First Nations, that their connections continue to these days. I also want to just point out these, this meeting, as all the meetings are video streamed and recorded in archive for future viewing. We have a fairly straightforward agenda in front of us today, and Counselor Nay is running late, may not make it to this meeting, depending on what happens, but we're going to try and get through our agenda package in a reasonably timely fashion. Item number on the agenda is just the review of the 2020 council priorities, and my giving this to Ms. Baye, welcome, Director of Strategic Initiatives.
Thank you, your worship. Just a brief introduction, this report provides further information related to the metrics discussed at the January 16 meeting, and in response to council's comments earlier, recommends removal of the metric relating to deer management. The report also, in response to council's earlier request, provides information on the financial and staff impacts of pursuing council-selected potential new projects, and specifics of that are provided in attachment two to your reports. So with that information in hand, staff await your direction in regards to which, if any of the projects you want us to include in the five-year financial plan.
Okay, thank you very much, and we can take questions of staff, or we can, the motions here are somewhat procedural, but at the end of the day, we have to deal with attachment two, which is the new council initiatives, if anything we want to include onto the preliminary budget deliberations portion of either this year or future years. So, and we'll do that by motion, just so that we're very clear in terms of what we have support to add. So, as there, we can deal with these one by one if you want. If someone wants to make a motion for the removal of the deer, as discussed at the last meeting, we can, we can talk to that.
I'll make that motion, seconded.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion that was talked at the last meeting in terms of, these are the metrics, these are the annual end-of-year metrics for guiding our strategic priorities and budget, is how this is being put forward, so it'll remain in the annual report, but will not be part of the metrics that we're going to gather on an annual basis? Is there any discussion? Counselor Zelka.
Yes, I'm heartened to hear that the numbers will stay in the annual report, so, and through our partners, of course, get some, some good data, and that the data will be available for the public through some means, if not, not this means. So, I would be able to support this, that would be fine. Just wanted to also ask, will the public be able to provide input in this meeting?
They will. Seeing no other discussion on that, I'm, I guess the simplest way of doing this is we have to go through and make these motions, is invite the public up on each, on each item, before, maybe you should, before we get to the motions. So if anybody wishes to speak to anything related to the 2020 council priorities, you're more than welcome to do so. Not seeing anybody coming forward at this point. So then that means we're back to this table, any other discussion on item, on the motion on the table, which is the removal of the deer from the metrics? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oh, sorry, Counselor Zelka.
Sorry, if you're asking about just the deer, I would be fine to vote on that, but are you asking about other metrics?
Just the deer at this point.
Just the deer at this point, that's my.
Oh, any metrics to be added?
Any other metrics to be added or removed?
No, just the deer at this point, we have the list of metrics. So we'll deal with the motion of the deer, and I'll take an ancillary motion to something you wish to add after that.
Thank you.
So I'll call a question, all those in favor, opposed, unopposed. Sir, Counselor Zelka, there was something you wished to consider for addition for metrics?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to start with a question through to staff first, before I consider potentially adding a metric. In the report, let's see if I can find it again now, relating to emergency program volunteer hours, and I'm pleased to see that the fire chief is in attendance, so potentially through you, the question could potentially be referred to him. Page two of the report, the second point, it refers to how emergency program volunteer hours generally are not captured, however, I happen to know that with respect to what's called the task number and a volunteer number, every single meeting of the emergency program, the first thing we do is we sign in and we sign out at the end. We actually know the exact number of hours for every single volunteer with, under the emergency program, because they are under a task number with respect to the province. Maybe possibly even have to report out to the province at the end of the year, but I was wondering if possibly I could just clarify to see whether that was true or not, to see whether we could potentially use that as a, as a metric. If not here, then I'd even, I'd let me just start with a question first.
Okay, I guess, I may just ask the question of you before we go to that question, because these are metrics to guide our strategic priorities and budgeting processes, is that a metric you feel should be part of this, or just something that you would like to see tracked more broadly in, in annual reports or some other place?
I just wanted to make sure that wherever we're tracking the volunteer hours, which we're potentially tracking these as well, I was under the impression we're tracking the volunteer hours as part of our strategic, but if it's, we're not, and it's in the annual report, then I would be fine for those hours to appear there. So I just guess any clarification of that as well, please.
Okay, Ms. Baye.
Thank you, your worship. I did explore it with, with Eileen and, or Eileen Grant, our emergency preparedness coordinator, and we do track the number of volunteers, we don't track the number of volunteer hours, and apparently it would be quite onerous to start tracking that. If there were to be an emergency that we got funding from for the province, then indeed we would be tracking hours as part of a PEP task number, but with, there is a lot more volunteer work that goes on through that program than just during an actual emergency. There's a lot of community education and a lot of engagement with the community, that is all part of the volunteer work done by that group, and unfortunately, we're, we have not been able to track those hours, and in inquiring, it would be quite time-consuming to do so without the systems in place to, to track that.
Yes, Counselor Zelka.
Then, then are we tracking volunteer hours in general, in the other areas, not necessarily the emergency management volunteers, but other volunteers? And in which, which program or which report, please?
Ms. Baye.
So as indicated in the January 16 report that came forward, we are tracking volunteers, the recreation program, for example, tracks volunteers, our archives tracks volunteers, and, and those hours were suggested to be tracked and reported on as part of this metrics program, and the query had come from councils to whether we could also track the emergency program volunteer hours, and that's where I further investigated that, and this is the report back that unfortunately, we're not easily able to do that.
I'm, I'm fine to leave it for now, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Is there any, Counselor Green?
Through you, Mayor, to Ms. Baye, but it's possible to track numbers, numbers of volunteers' volume. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else on attachment one, the proposed approach to council feedback on metrics that anybody wishes to add, or is the list is shown acceptable to people that are here? Counselor Patterson.
Yep, just on accessibility, that really is about the, the legislation that the province is, is bringing in, and so I don't, I don't know exactly what metrics we will be looking for, other than perhaps including it in our housing framework plan, but I think that until the province brings more clarity on what the expectations are, and, and how they are to be implemented in the municipalities, I don't know exactly how we will, you know, I just raised it as something that needs to be included, but the metrics right now, I can't advise on.
Okay, I'm sure, I know it'll be watched over from the planning department as, as time goes on. Is there any other comment from staff on the accessibility piece? Okay. Anything else, anybody at this table wishes to highlight or could with this thing? Is there anybody from the public, or Counselor Green? No, no apologies.
Thank you, through you, Mayor, to Ms. Baye, on all of the housing pieces, which include the multifamily rental and so on, those can be captured in regional reports too, I think, but is there any way that we can capture them, not necessarily annually, but on a, on a semi-annual basis? Is, is that something we could, or reflect in our annual report, I suppose, as well? Thank you.
Ms. Baye.
Through the mayor, it really depends on what kind of housing stats we would be looking at, if we're looking at the number of new approvals, and in other words, information that the District of Oak Bay is party to, that can be reported on an annual basis, we can track the number of new building permit issuances, for example, for the different types of housing units, we can track the number of demolitions. If we're looking at the, the occupancy in those housing units, or any of the information that comes from the census, then that would really be something that we would have information on only every five years, and typically with a two-year time lag between when the census comes out and when the census data is available. So, as you'll see, there, there's, we're recommending really a bit of a mix, and, and as you may recall from the January 16 report, we are recommending that some targets be put in place in terms of the direction of, of trends that council wishes to see as an outcome of some of the housing work that's being done by the planning department right now, and we have reported on the, the general trends with respect to each of those metrics, and for us to assess whether progress is going in the right direction, we just now need to know what council's desired direction is, and that will likely be coming as a result of that planning work that's currently underway.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's hard to measure how far down the path you're going, if you don't know which direction on the path you're going, fair enough. Is there anybody from, seeing any other, Counselor Zelka?
One other question I wanted to ask through you to staff, with respect to the number of vacant houses in Oak Bay, I understand the province is now collecting fairly extensive data on those who have, choose to leave their house empty. I was wondering if that data was readily available, that might help guide us in terms of, of some of our future work with respect to housing and housing options. I was wondering whether that, that might be something to consider adding.
It probably is, it probably not possible as part of our metrics, because it's, but perhaps as part of our annual report, if that information is available, we can include that as part of our, just general information available. All right, is there any, happy to welcome anybody from the public to come forward at this time, if they want to, if there's anything on the metrics sheets themselves, if people feel there's any things missing, or anything that you see on this list that is being moved to annual report, or to some other place that you think needs a home in our, in our end-of-year metrics, please feel free to come forward. Not seeing any, okay, thank you. So, that leaves us with, sorry, I'm just making sure I don't pass over things. So that's really item number one, and I, there's no other motion, I don't believe, required for that, we just wanted to confirm that list. The, the request, second request here is that council received the January 30 report, which attachment two detailing resources implication, so if we can have that motion.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. No, no, we're still on item number one on the agenda, there's just, there's a multiple recommendations, and this is attachment two that we're going to talk to next, which is the resource implications of potential new council initiatives. So we just need to receive it officially, and then we can get some direction as well, and I'll go through that from a, actually, maybe I shouldn't have a motion on the table here, we'll get direction from Ms. Hopkins on this one, just since we don't want motions on each individual item here, in terms of direction from this body, should we just have an individual motion for each as to, as to what they, what we want done with them?
Your worship, yes, an individual motion on each would be recommended.
Okay, I didn't have a second yet for that motion, so if we can just withdraw that, we'll be good to go on that.
I'll withdraw.
Thank you. So, we have attachment number two, this is the, as we all recall, but for those in the audience who are watching at home, we went through in the strategic priorities process, and there was a large parking lot over years and years of really, really worthwhile projects that we had to kind of winnow down to, to try and make sure that we were very clear on our priorities for the balance of this term, and there were seven items that we felt still merited some, some input in terms of the, the impact to staff, impact on budget, and possible inclusion in our strategic priorities, either this year or over the balance of the term. So that's what we have in front of us here, and I think what the simplest way of going through this is, if you've had a chance to read this, we'll just go through one by one and just get a, a motion from this body, whether or not we're going to try and include them either with a destination timeline, and/or in this year's budget for consideration. Nothing is final until we actually pass a budget that includes the line item. If I might just get a bit of clarification from staff, there's a recommended timing column here, I'm assuming that's sort of the, the earliest possible timing, but it's, but it does say recommended, there's just a bit of explanation in terms of what that number actually indicates. Ms. Baye.
Thank you, worship. The recommended timing is really taking a look at the workloads that are planned for this year and future years, and considering how those suggested actions tie into other work that is planned, or that has already been directed, and in some cases also tying into simply other initiatives, or, or just logically when it might tie in, given, given other work that's, that's currently underway, or that might be underway other places. So, it's really just, if council wishes to, to advance some of that, it's not to say that it couldn't be done, but there might be even more significant resource implications in advancing them. So we tried to look at it from the perspective of what could be, be done in a way that would minimize the resource implications, both from a staffing and a financial point of view.
Thank you, Ms. Baye. Is there anything else you want to speak to on this particular attachment, before we get through the line items?
No, your worship, other than just to say that we have the, the directors for, for those departments, for the most part, present here tonight to, to speak to them, so if there are further questions, those directors should hopefully be in a position to, to provide additional information.
Okay, I won't go there unless there's questions of this body, just in the interest of time. So item number one is the enhanced enforcement of short-term rentals, you see the, the pieces here. The most efficient way of going through this is, someone can make a motion to, the motions are awkward on this one, in terms of what the actual wording of the motions are, I was visualizing, maybe we could just do something along the lines of a motion to include it in the, in the budgeting process for that year, and, and/or a motion to set it aside at this time. Is that, are those, either of those two reasonable? Ms. Hopkins, I'll look to you.
Your worship, yes, that would be ideal.
Okay. Yeah, Ms. Counselor Green, go ahead.
Thank you, through you, Mayor, to Ms. Baye or to Ms. Hopkins, can you just give me a quick, brief overview of how we're coping at the moment with bylaw enforcement? Are we meeting our needs, are we?
I'll put that to Mr. Anderson, who's, who's bylaw enforcement.
Mr. Anderson, bylaw enforcement, are, are we coping with the current workload? Are there struggles, you know, before we move forward, I, I think it would be important to know how, how we're doing at the moment? Thank you.
If I may, through the chair, I would characterize it as, it is a struggle to balance the, the building official task with the bylaw enforcement task, and I would just use today as an example, I would say most of the day was spent on bylaw enforcement by our building official. So it, it currently is one that we, we can affect a certain level of enforcement on, on a range of issues that are in the community, and then there are some issues in the community that we're just really not able to take that to, I guess, a full enforcement level, and so that is an issue with having a 0.5 FTE bylaw enforcement currently, and I guess an example might be the short-term rentals, that we do have complaints around those, but we take a, a basic approach to enforcement with respect to that item, for example.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I may follow up on that, the, if this was to be added into, as a, you know, as a potential into the 2021 budget line item for consideration, for expansion of that, would that then come with a bit more, you know, bit more background at that time for us to consider? I'm just thinking of, what do other jurisdictions of similar size have in terms of bylaw enforcement, those sorts of comparators, not this year, but at the year that we would have it in the budget? Is that something that we would expect to bring back with that?
I would expect we would, and I, I think council might want to be reminded that we did have a full-time bylaw enforcement officer in Oak Bay in the not-too-distant past, so just FYI.
Thank you, Counselor Green.
I'm sorry, just for my own information through you, can you tell me, Mr. Anderson, what happened to the full, full-time equivalent position?
As long as it's not too gruesome.
Yeah, I, I don't want really horrible details, just, just a brief.
Sorry, that was a bad joke, Mr. Anderson.
To my knowledge, it was prior to my coming on, but it, it was a retirement, and then I think there was a, a review of, of the functions, and we ended up with our current situation, which was half bylaw enforcement, half building official.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I'd like to make a motion that we include item number one in the budget process for 2021.
Second.
Second, Counselor Zelka.
May I just, very, very brief question, what is the cost of one FTE per year, please? And I guess half of that would be a half of an FTE.
Very, very rough numbers, obviously.
Through your worship, I'm estimating $110,000 for that particular FTE.
Thank you. And I'm just, the general looks of, that, gee, that seems high, that would obviously be the salary plus a, plus benefits, all-in package, pension, et cetera. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? This would be, this would then become a line item for consideration in the 2021 budget, if this is put in here, but for, we'd consider it at that time, this is not pretty clear for everybody in the audience, and, and at this table, we're not talking about approving anything here tonight, we're talking about whether or not to add it to that, that piece. Counselor Appleton.
Thank you, worship. I'm going to speak against this motion, just from this, from the point of view of some, to the effect of some of the comments that you made, which is an evaluation of what we actually need for bylaw enforcement purposes, this was specifically brought up in relation to short-term rentals, but it seems clear to me that there needs to be a sort of a more holistic evaluation of what the district needs for bylaw enforcement overall, this is specifically in relation to this topic, but I, I do hear about other bylaw enforcement issues on the ground, so I think rather than going ahead with this at this time, I would rather bring forward some direction to staff to provide us with some information, to the point that you mentioned, as far, as far as considering what our bylaw enforcement needs are.
I almost wish we had our HR plan discussion before heading this one. Counselor Braithwaite.
Thank you, I'm going to be voting for it, and the reasons are, I understand, I hear what Counselor Appleton is saying, but I think that that's one of the biggest areas where I hear complaints from people is in the bylaw enforcement, and I think that, that this particular addition would not be just for the short-term rentals, but it would be for all of the other infractions as well, and I think of anywhere in the building and planning department that we need an extra FTE, it would be within that bylaw, bylaw enforcement officer position.
Counselor Green.
Thank you, I will also speak in support of the motion. This has a broader impact on, on the, on the housing situation in, in Oak Bay, we are down to the crunch as it is, and so the complaints I receive are about the fact that we have so, so many limited options, and, and this kind of activity really puts stress on an already stressed market, so I will support the motion, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Green, Counselor Zelka, you had, oh, Counselor Patterson, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor, I echo what Counselor Green and Counselor Braithwaite have said. I, I think that the, the short-term rentals, I mean, obviously the province is looking at them more closely now, and they're, they're getting revenues from Airbnbs, so certainly that market, and maybe that's something that, some of that money should be flowing, flowing back through to the municipalities to help assist us with these, but I think that the short-term rentals, the feedback I'm getting from the community is, this is one of the problem areas, and I think that it, it causes problems when we're looking at the overall framework of things like secondary suites or other accommodations, it, it, it's mostly the negative impacts from the short-term rentals, rather than the longer-term rentals, and so I think being able to have some idea of how we might be able to deal with that, look at it more concretely in the future, would only benefit the, the whole housing framework program.
Thank you. I don't have a lot to add to this, but I'll just, I was actually leaning towards the stance taken by Andrew, Counselor Appleton, on this, because I think that this is a broader discussion than just a bylaw enforcement officer at a halftime, but I think I'll support it, because I think if nothing else, it'll put that into the conversation next year in terms of we do our HR plan, and as we look at enforcement as part of that overall piece, it makes sure that there's actually some, that, that's part of the conversation, at least, and that would provide some indication from this body that, that that's a consideration that we would consider, at least, in then, in the future years, in terms of how we allocate some of those funds, so I'm okay with adding it to 2021 budget for those, for those reasons, but I do echo a lot of the concerns that Counselor Appleton raised on that as well, I think they're quite legitimate. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question, all those in favor, opposed, want to oppose, Counselor Appleton. Thank you. Item number two on the agenda, we have engaged with First Nations to identify supportable improvements at Willow's Beach. As the person who raised this, it put it in 2021, I think what I would probably recommend on this one, frankly, is if council's amenable, I will just take this as a soft to-do in 2020, to reach out and to see what, where the First Nations partner, potential partners are in terms of their piece, and then we can maybe bring that back as part of the larger Parks and Rec master plan, and they can maybe be a partner as we look at that in the future, but I think that needs some work, some ground-level work done first, and I'm quite happy to let this one sit off of the strategic planning until some more conversation has happened. If you're comfortable with that, Counselor Green, and then Counselor Zelka.
I also think there are opportunities for Oak Bay to partner with other municipalities on some of the activities that they're engaged in, so it wouldn't necessarily have to, have to be a standalone like this, I, I think we could do some other things that won't cost as much in terms of consulting fees, and I agree with you that we need to do more groundwork.
Counselor Zelka.
I would tend to agree with you with respect to, to budgeting and priorities. On the soft work side, I would hope that maybe we could ask some, some way of reaching out to some of our Oak Bay partners, I'm, I'm thinking off the top of my head, you know, Kiwanis or Lions, or with, because specifically, this, this does address a little Willow's Beach, and I'm sure there's some things we could possibly do there that wouldn't cost a lot of money, or maybe not a lot of, a lot of effort, and ideally through, through some of our partners. I presume this would not, however, affect the communities-to-community efforts that would continue? No, thank you.
Any other discussion? So if people are amenable to that, just a motion to remove this from the list.
I'll make the motion to remove item number two from the list.
Moved and seconded, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, unopposed, thank you. Item number three, this is a review of consolidation bylaw, the Uplands Regulation bylaw, and we have the note there from staff. Mr. Anderson, do you want anything to add to that, or are you comfortable with the, well, I'll go ask if there's any questions of this body, are there any questions or comments from members of the committee? Counselor Braithwaite.
Yeah, I, I would tend to agree with a comment that you made before, that it would have been more interesting to have the HR discussion prior to this, because when I look at this and I, I see that, you know, they're suggesting a consultant at approximately $30,000, well, would that be contingent on what's happening, perhaps, in our next discussion in, in and around how many new staff we'll have coming on, and then will that $30,000 be taken off the plate here, because it's included in a new position?
Ms. Rella, I'll just.
Just a comment on the order of agenda, so what's actually before council tonight is the human resource plan framework, so you won't have the staffing resource plan before you, staff will be working on that this So you won't have the Staffing Resource Plan before you, staff will be working on that this coming year. So we apologize that that information isn't available, but I think by the time we get to the manager of Human Resources' presentation, you'll see that it's a much higher level. My subsequent report about the seven FTEs, we'll speak to and provide rationale. At this time, those are the only employment asks before council.
Thank you, Ms. Rella.
And I'm just going to qualify other than the police board request. Thank you.
Fair enough. Thank you. Is Counselor Green?
Would someone kindly remind me why this was on the list? I'm, I'm trying to recall the conversation.
Sure, no, no, I will, I can happy to do that. This is a item on the agenda in that we've had at least a couple, several applications for the Uplands that met the zoning by law, but clearly didn't meet the, the setting and design because of building to the maximum size. And it's just, this is a consideration of do we move ahead with some of the zoning changes in the Uplands to essentially realign the zoning more to what we're, the expectations are of the council to avoid the, the difficulty of people going through that process, arriving here and then getting turned down, having a bit more clarity in that. So that's what this, that's what this item is.
Thank you. Now I recall. Thank you.
Counselor Zelka?
Thank you, Chair. And first a comment. If I recall correctly, on the proposed new operational initiatives from staff, one of them was update land use procedures by law, and I understand that that will be moving forward, SC 47. And, and we discussed in general terms of, of trying to sort of push some things in, in the, in, in that pot, possibly making it larger. I know there's also been some general discussions about redoing the zoning by law in some, if not in this mandate, then shortly, probably shortly thereafter. This is a zoning by law specific to the, to the Uplands. I'm wondering whether this could be combined with another current initiative. The, the 300 hours unfortunately scares me a little bit, but I understand we want to do a good job.
So I'll just put this to, to staff, because I think this is a, this is a very good question. We've, this is almost pulling it out of the, the, any of the sort of part of the, the scheduled process of bylaw reviews, I understand it, and, and moving it forward. So, Mr. Anderson, as soon as you're, I, you have to treat them nicely, or they do tend to go for the throat.
Thank you, worship. Your worship, through the chair. The, I think the point's well-taken that what we've heard respecting the Uplands by law and guidelines in particular, and the process around that, is that there, there may be some wish to, to look at our, our zoning that, that provides for what happens in the Uplands area. It's not the Uplands regulations that, that govern that, that scale that we're talking about. And so it, the recommendation is that it is best dealt with as part of the zoning by law update. And just to clarify, it wouldn't be part of a land use procedures content. That's, that's more applications and process and fees and that type of thing. But it is, is appropriate for us to have a, another look at, at the Uplands area in the context of, of looking at our zoning by law. And that is contemplated to commence 2022, 2023 timeframe.
And isn't the where this ended up in the timelines as well on this piece? So I think if it is contemplated in that part, it probably doesn't need to be a separate piece on here. But if, again, this is a question of whether this body wishes to move it forward and, and deal with the ramifications. Counselor Zelka, you done with your questions?
Oh, thank you. I, I take heart and, and I commend staff for putting the Oak Bay Special Powers Act legislation, a copy of it, on our website. Thank you very much for doing that. Because this is 2022, I presume we'll be revisiting this next year and the year after, before we actually vote for funds on this. I just wanted to know what the perspective procedures.
Nothing we're doing tonight commits us to anything. It just adds it into the work plan essentially for consideration of future budgets and strategic planning.
Thank you. I, I think this is important, and I, I sort of call, call upon my other counselors to see whether they have interest in this as well. I have interest in having this stay.
I'm going to go to Counselor Green, but I just want to ask one clarifying question, because the timeline that's put in here of 2022 is, sounds like it's the same timeline as us starting the, the bylaw review as a whole. So is, is, is 2022 really moving this up? I mean, it seems completely irrational to move, to do something separate the year, the same year or the year before, a more wholesome approach to it. Is that, is that, is the 2022 number there because the bylaw review is happening, or is that just really the earliest that we could possibly get to it?
It's, it is because it's contemplated in 2022, the zoning by law update.
Okay. Counselor Green?
Just through, through you, Chair, to Mr. Anderson. In the meantime, if, if we take this off, are there any, any measures that we can take to clarify some of the issues that have been raised by applicants around lack of clarity and so on? Are there things we can do that won't entail a full review or entail spending money on this at this point?
I think through the chair, the, the short answer is no, but, but the, the longer answer is that as we work with applicants, we do provide them with an awful lot of expertise and clarification regarding, regarding this. And so I, I think we, we do that through the process of applications. I think that the bigger piece is, is looking at the guidelines sort of standalone and then looking at them in terms of the context of, of zoning and, and how those two relate. I think the, the mayor had mentioned that you see setting and design applications that may or may not mesh with what you think you want to see in terms of scale, but the zoning by law provides for that. So how are those two working together? It's, I don't think it's a simple matter of sort of maybe looking at the guidelines and trying to clarify some things. The guidelines are there really to implement some broad principles around protection of values that are identified for Uplands. They're, they're not really there and intended to, to sort of speak specifically to individual house design. And I think there's, there's a piece of clarification right there, I think, for people to consider is that those guidelines are not really intended to, to help us to, to, to look at the design of single-family homes. There, to put those homes into the context of that special place that is Uplands. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rella, did you have something to add?
Your worship, and I would defer to the Director of Finance on this, but it is my understanding that currently there are, there is a budget allocation for review of the zoning by law built into the draft financial plan that council will foresee on February 6th, based on previous council direction. Staff's recommendation for additional clarity on this is that we hold on the Uplands and review it in the context of the budget dollars that are already in the five-year financial plan that council will be considering shortly.
Thank you. So would, would that be the motion then, if that's the recommendation to, just to include this item within the, the broader bylaw review?
Your worship, that motion won't be required as it's currently in the five-year financial plan. If council wanted to push that out or advance it, they can do that in the context of that review.
Okay, so there's no motion on this. If that's the will of this body, I'm just trying to move this through a process. Yeah, essentially would be the motion at this point would just be to, to set this one aside.
I'll make the motion to omit item three from the new council initiatives for consideration.
Second.
Moving seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, opposed, non-opposed. Thank you very much, everyone, for the, we're trying with these reasonably quickly, but it's good to have the, the discussion to make sure that we understand what we're, what we're contemplating. Next is install additional electric vehicle charging stations. I'll turn to the committee on this one.
If I may. I, I think this is, I guess, shall we call it a no-brainer? Something that if the province is providing money and possibly the feds, I definitely think we should proceed with this. And, and if we don't, then I would hope the Climate Action Working Group would force us to do it. So I'd like to leave this in, and at an appropriate time, I'll move a motion.
To be clear, the Climate Action Working Group cannot force us to do anything. Counselor Appleton, you wanted to add something?
Just a, a quick question. The recommended timing is 2022, 2020 to 2022. And then there's a number of different steps that are outlined in, in the work plan. Just for clarification, would the options analysis report be year one? And then other things would have happened in subsequent years, or have, have staff gotten to that level of granularity yet?
Through the chair, yes, it's the, to, to be clear, the 2020 is the options analysis report that will kind of bring to the council some boundaries around what could be done and what couldn't be done to allow that discussion to happen about what the scope would be, like how many stations where they would go, and that key discussion around the policy aspects that are in the description. And then the 2021, 22 part of it is the implementation of it. When would that actually happen? And we would need to do that options analysis to get a better sense of resources and requirements to actually deliver on those. And of course, it would, it would depend on how many there was going to be done and, and costs, et cetera, et cetera.
That, Counselor Appleton?
Move that item number four be included in new council initiatives. Second.
Moving second. Is there any other discussion on this? I would just add that I, if for, this is something that staff is contemplating, I would just add one of the options available is potentially just putting it out tender to see what people could come up with in terms of actually bringing forward to the municipality a turnkey solution and their own recommendations for locations and things, if that's a possibility. I don't know if that is or not. But things that might move it forward a bit more quickly might be possible and at lower cost to the municipality. Counselor Green?
Just a really quick question, and I don't know the answer, but do other municipalities charge for the use of, of EV stations? Thank you.
I see Mr. Payne reaching.
Through your worship, it's, it's a combination of models. So there's some, Kowood, for instance, has EV stations that you can pay for fast chargers and then others that are open for community use for free.
So combined model sounds, sounds good to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, non-opposed? As those cost implications, of course, this will come forward for consideration. Increased fees for demolition permits. This is Counselor Green, I think, was part of your piece. So is there any, I'll just ask, is there any questions on this one or? All right.
I'd like to move that we retain this on the list, and I really appreciate staff's input here, knowing that, I'm sure you have a lot of spare time. But I do appreciate that as time permits. And I don't know if planning staff want to comment or not, but I, I support this because I think it, it does two things. It makes people think about whether or not they want to demolish a home. And secondly, it also infers that, that recycling waste is also a good practice. And I think, given our current housing market, it's, it's, it would be useful. Thank you.
I'm not seeing staff dropping up to say anything, so I'll leave it at that. Counselor Zelka?
I'm sorry, but if that, was that a motion? I'd be fine to second it.
Sorry. I will move to retain this item, please, on, on the list.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counselor Appleton?
Just a quick question, your worship. It, it, it does, the, the, what is needed describes this, it says this could be done as time permits. It, can, can we specify that it's our expectation that it will be done as time permits? That it should not take priority over other things? It should be worked into schedules as, as time allows?
I think if we leave it as, if we maybe be clarified that this is a 2020, 2021 best effort piece, then that would be probably sufficient. Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I, I guess that, that's our language in terms of saying it could be done. And if, I believe council leaves that on the list and it becomes part of your priorities, then it, it would be a, would be done message from council. That's how staff would read that.
Thank you. I, I, this isn't my, I, I, I love where this is, why it's being asked. I'm not sure it's the right, right tool for the job, just given how much money there is in, in, in houses and, and how little this is a percentage, even if we, if we maximize it. But I certainly look forward to seeing what the staff can come back with as, as time allows. And given that, that sort of best effort, I'm, I'm quite comfortable with this going forward, so. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, non-opposed, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
And more recycling bins. Again, this is looking at staff preparing reports, where it's not really budgetary pieces. Is there any questions or comments on this one? Mr. Herman, I think this is, does it fall under you or to Mr. Haran? Mr. Haran? Okay. And, and just, I read that is, if this was, 2020 would be sometime this year, probably, there would be a report back saying, what would be the implications if we wanted to do this? What would be the, the cost implications? And so this would be not a budget item in 2020 necessarily, but a, a report in 2020. Is that the?
Correct, your worship, because it has levels of service implications and cost implications. So it's not something that we'd be able to implement for 2020. So it would, the idea would be to provide the boundaries of the potential increases to level of service and the implications. And then for council's consideration for future changes to level of service.
Thank you, Mr. Haran. Counselor Zelka?
Just a very brief question, if I may, through you to staff. Might this possibly in, come with a staff or additional staff requirement and/or additional, the trucking or equipment requirement to collect the different materials?
Through the chair, that's the kind of information that we'll definitely have in that report, but just off of our initial analysis. The, the vehicle that we use, that Parks uses to do the garbage pickup would need to be modified to accommodate recycling, like separating at the source. And then because unfortunately, the experiences of our neighbor municipalities who have implemented this already, not, unfortunately, there's too many citizens who don't follow the rules and just put whatever they want in whatever bin. So that means the, whatever's picked up often needs to be sorted back at the, back at the yard. So that's, that's probably a, a, a people requirement. And then maybe even an equipment requirement in terms of doing that safely and, and so on. So those are our initial reactions to some of those, and this is why it's a, there's a bit of a complication that we have to investigate and report out on related to this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Haran. Any discussion?
I'd like to move that item number six is included in the budget process.
Second.
Moving second. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, opposed, non-opposed. I'm not doing a very good job of striking things off this list, but they're at least best efforts. We got one, one gone. And item number seven, two gone. Change rules for home-based businesses. This is listed in here as 2020, but I, I think this is another one that seems logically to best efforts perhaps. But council's ready comments or questions from, on this one? Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, worship. The, the amount of time that, that staff estimates for the workload to complete it brings me a little bit of pause. I think it's an eminently supportable initiative to be undertaking, but I am conscious of the amount of, of time required of building and planning staff, so I'm, I'm not entirely comfortable assigning this for, for right now.
Is there other? Counselor Zelka?
I, I'm, I'm certainly in favor of the initiative, but I do wonder out loud whether we could either deal with this on a one-off basis initially, or treat this the same way we dealt with the home care item that came up a couple of years ago, where we chose as a body to not enforce a particular ruling in our bylaws. We went through the process to, 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 to stop enforcement in general. That, so there's a couple of ways of, of, of dealing with this one and that we could potentially keep, keep, keep staff out of it if we, if necessary. That's one possibility.
I'm not ever a big fan of the not enforcement process, but should I, should I turn to staff and?
I, I won't speak to the, to the, the enforcement question, but I, I think maybe just to clarify, to modify this section of the zoning by law is that estimate of about three weeks of staff time. I think we understand some of the pieces that need to be corrected in that. But it is a zoning by law amendment, so that's why we put in that it would take that amount of time, which involves, you know, through the commission, through public hearing and, and readings of bylaws. So that's, that's the, the timing piece, and that, that is staff time as well. I should probably add that to, to process that. But if that helps to maybe clarify that a little bit. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Counselor Zelka and then Counselor Patterson?
To just finish off then, so as it's a zoning change, might it be, I mean, we potentially, potentially could add some, some, some funding to extend the zoning redo to include this as well, potentially, as, as opposed to accelerating it and, and doing separate meetings.
Counselor Patterson, you had a?
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I don't know what the extent of this problem is. Certainly how many cases we have where enforcement is required, but because it is with the Uh certainly how many cases we have where enforcement is required, but because it is with the zoning bylaw again, it does and it somewhat fits into the housing framework we were doing. But I think this could be looked at with um the zoning bylaw perhaps put off into 2022 and not something that needs to be done in 2020.
Yeah, go back to Council Zelka.
If I may, just a very brief question through you to um uh Director Building and Planning. Is this another area that uh temporary use permits, if we had them, could be applied?
Mr. Anderson?
Uh no, through the chair.
Uh seeing no other speakers, I'll I'll speak in, you know, if if this is done on a best effort basis, I would like to keep it in here. I think this is one of those ones that it's not germane to the by building, the zoning bylaw, particularly it's really just our current law bylaw stipulates, I think it's it's piano teachers and something else allowed and nothing else. And it just does not reflect what's happening. And uh I I've had I've had a number of people over the last couple of years come forward and just ask, you know, I I want to do something small and have people in accountants who want to just, you know, do that, you know, have people come and visit them and they're not allowed legally allowed to do it. And so they're very tiptoeing around wanting, you know, and I just I think it's I hate to see us having bylaws in the books that are frankly just being ignored, but making everybody uncomfortable. I given that three weeks of timeframe, if we stretch that out ever as available over the next year or so, I I I don't I feel quite comfortable leaving it in here, but I defer to the wisdom of this of this body. Uh Council Green?
I I would support keeping it in. Um I think it's also a local economy issue. Um I think we're trying to encourage local economy and 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 a vibrant, small business economy. And I think this is, it is very germane to um our community at this point. And as home-based employment, it it also helps people who um have young children at home, can't perhaps work outside the home, but can in fact support a home-based business. So I think it has has some gender implications as well. So I would support it.
Council, please wait.
I'll make the motion to include um item number seven in the budget process. Um do you want me to do anything about the the timing in there? Should we like as? I'm not sure.
It's up to you.
I I think I'll just leave it as it is right now. So I'll include it.
You can say the best effort.
Yeah, to best effort. So change, so include item number seven um in the budget process um and just change it to best effort um instead of the preamble that's there for um under the what would we be needed to add initiative to work plans?
Second.
Moving second. Any further discussion? Council Zelka?
Uh I I I'll support the um the motion. Um I'd feel better if it was if if part of the preamble is said it initiated or suggested that this would be part of the zoning rework as opposed to a separate zoning uh amendment. If that uh could be added, I would I would uh it might provide clearer direction.
I think it's it's actually separate because if we, I think the appropriate thing in that case would be to defeat this motion, if that's how you feel. And uh and then just make the motion to include this as part of the bylaws if that was the preferred model that you you wanted to go to. So that the process here, we have a motion on the table for best effort this year or next. If you wanted to see it just deferred entirely for consideration as part of the broader bylaw, then vote against this and then you can bring it forward.
Appreciate that. Um uh I I'd be willing to propose an amendment that we change the year to 2022 from 2020, uh which would line it up with the zoning bylaw.
I'll see. There's no seconders, so we'll go back to the original motion, uh which is uh to move it into the uh budget process and for to best effort this year or next. Um Council Patterson?
Thank you, mayor. Um just I'm not totally clear on how this uh will flow through. And so if um if this happens before 2022, and certainly I appreciate the the comments, I wasn't quite familiar with how dated our bylaw actually is. If if the change is made, does this precipitate um more applications for home-based businesses that are have been tippy-toeing around in the background and not? I'm just wondering about if we're looking at the workload and and what staff are dealing with, will this precipitate applications that will be dealt with also?
I would anticipate likely yes, but they also come with fees, which just helps. Counselor, uh Mr. Anderson, did you?
Chair, yeah, I would confirm that. And uh perhaps what we would have is some existing businesses would then be perhaps more free to function as a a home-based business does in other communities. And that is has one or two guests attend. There are limits you can put on that to to help manage any neighborhood impacts. So thank you.
I I appreciate that. Usually businesses that have one or two people attending at any given time. So um all right, so we have that motion on the table. Uh seen no other discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed? Council Appleton opposed? Uh that brings us to the end of attachment two. We don't really want to necessarily add anything else at this point, but I will make sense. This is the topic. Is there anything else that people wanted to put forward for consideration at this moment? Seeing any, I'll go to the public. Is there anything, any uh pieces of uh comments that the public wishes to make before we move on to item number three on the or sorry, attachment two uh that people want to speak to? Seeing none. All right, so then uh do you want us to receive the report then of Director Strategic Initiatives as well? Is that the preferred mechanism or have we dealt with it by the?
Yes, if you could uh then approve that uh that resolution there with the the added items and then uh also address the additional two items that are a part of that uh option one. That would be great. There's there's two additional uh that council acknowledged the potential initiatives.
Oh, yeah, no, sorry. I just if there's anything else with the in terms of attachment two, it's the recommendation was that council receive it, but we've made motions on the individual items in there. So would you still like a motion to receive? Or have we dealt with the with the I'm just turning to Ms. Hopkins now for a procedural perspective, if there's anything else to do with this attachment?
Your worship, there's no uh there's no requirement for councils to receive the report. You've given staff direction that they can now take in action.
Okay, so we'll leave it at that then. Uh and uh we're now just uh they requested that council acknowledge potential initiatives listed in attachment four of January 16th report. Uh no longer be on staff's tracking list. Council Zelka?
I have a question through you to staff about that. Um and it also touches upon the um the the and further that um uh uh element regarding the 2017 protocol for raising new strategic um initiatives. The way I I I read the the suggested wording, and I wanted to just confirm that that I've got this correctly, is that if we strike um from further consideration, I guess, at least in terms of 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 uh of tracking on a potential projects tracking list, if we if we strike whatever we haven't approved from that list, um uh what that leaves me, I I I would make me sad. I would let me just start with that emotionally. Um because of all the work that uh some of us have done with restricted notice of motions and 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 efforts to get it through councils to to get it into a um uh a strategic planning process. So uh if uh what uh what it appears to be is that if um if we do uh proceed with it with this with this very clear uh process and and it's very above board, and I I love the transparency, is that um if staff, sorry, if council wishes to bring something forward through a notice of motion, a strategic initiative, and a council does approve it for the next um annual strategic planning process, basically, we just get one shot at it. And then if we don't then approve it at the next strategic planning parties, planning session like this, it would then be struck. And we would have to go through the notice of motion again to bring it forward again. Is this what I'm hearing? Um staff is suggesting we do?
First of all, I apologize if we're making you sad. That wasn't our intention, Council Zelka. Um so I think the idea is that this is really that attachment four, which was compiled of um previous councils' uh direction, maybe not formalized. It was prior to the tracking of council resolution. So this is part of that shift, very clear tracking and direction to staff. Council at any time can provide direction to staff to whether to uh add something to the list, amend the five-year financial plan. So um not that you only have one shot at it. Staff serves at the pleasure of council. It's just where does it fit into the process? And then this puts the onus on um council members to bring forward projects at each strategic uh planning juncture every year. So you'll see the complications that we experience with that large list because council members change, staff change. So unless it actually hits a tracking list, which is the intention uh with the resolutions that we've provided, we weren't sure about the status. Now we're changing it to something that's clear, trackable, and council at any time can provide uh direction. Uh staff has undertaken great efforts to bring you a five-year financial plan that uh represents the council direction to date. You're still going to have multiple uh times to amend that moving forward in your decision-making process this and every subsequent year.
Thank you. Council Green?
Just quickly and 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 briefly, I wasn't on council in 2017. What was the rationale for this particular protocol? Thank you.
Uh I'll do my best to articulate the logic for the protocol. Uh the protocol was there uh so that there wasn't uh sort of impromptu additions to workload without understanding the ramifications of budget and staff time. Because sometimes there's really good ideas that were brought forward, um but not realizing it and with the staff unable to provide some feedback on what that would mean from their work work uh their workload or or budget implications. Um we were getting not necessarily good decision-making, if that's to put it fair. Or that doesn't lead to good decision-making is probably a fair way of saying that. So the intention of this is that it's a formalized process. It also really clarifies that if there's a direction given to council to staff, it's a it's a it's a will of council. We're not allowed, myself or any other member of council can't direct staff on their work. And so this clarified that process to ensure that those are those are things. And I will say this this change that we're making where we're making motions, but we're actually tracking them publicly, I think was the missing part of that puzzle because without that, things still disappeared into the limbo and no one was really sure if it was being dealt with or not. So uh I believe this, that was the missing portion of this that would that that needed to be added.
Thank you very much.
So uh is someone willing to make the this? Yeah, Council Zelka?
Just one last comment before uh you you do your job, which is to move us along. Uh I do note, for example, the uh the initiative to uh uh install additional electric uh vehicle charging stations was added probably uh to our uh potentials list approximately four or five years ago. And then it sort of limped along year after year after year, and and we're finally tracking it now. So um uh I I uh I will, I guess, along with the rest of council, uh work to be to be uh um up on moving things forward and and being um uh throwing lots of ideas out there and see what sticks. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Zelka. Council Green?
I'll make a motion. Or do we have a motion? Sorry?
No, I need the motion. This is acknowledge the potential initiatives and reaffirm the 27 protocol. We can do those two together, I think.
I'll make that motion then, that that council acknowledged that the potential initiatives listed in attachment four of the January 16th 2020 report from the Director of Strategic Initiatives will no longer be on staff's potential projects tracking list unless until council directs otherwise. And further, that council reaffirm the 2017 protocol for proposed new initiatives, special projects, attachment three.
Second.
Moving seconded. Is there any other discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, non-opposed? Oh, well, sorry, Council Zelka opposed. Thank you. Sorry, I jumped the gun there. Uh is there anybody from the, we are just wrapping up then. Uh item number one, which is review of 2020 council priorities. Last chance for anybody from the public who wishes to come forward to address council. You're more than welcome to do so at this time. Seeing none. Okay, so on to item number two of the agenda, which is our human resources plan framework. And uh we have Ms. Donnelly here, the Director of uh Human Resources. Uh but Ms. Vrella looks like she's about to put her finger on the button, so I will leave it to her first to introduce.
It's funny, I was teased earlier today about that stance I get before I leap on the button. So, yeah. Um so tonight's an opportunity to provide council uh and the public with some foundational information on districts uh staffing-related issues. Uh staff are recognized as one of the district's biggest assets, and they also require proactive planning as we're seeing council have more uptake on. So just as we spent la time last year discussing housing and asset management and building that uh knowledge base, so too we would we like to do that with human resources. Um we we believe that providing that knowledge base allows council to understand what's coming. I think there's some uh discrepancy, if you will, on the understanding of what an HR plan is. Uh and I think Ms. Donnelly will walk us through the idea that this really is a multi-year, multi-component project. Uh and I'll hand that over to Bonnie on that note. So thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Donnelly. We don't yeah, we don't have the pleasure of you having at this table very often, so it's nice to have you here.
I'm delighted to be here. Thank you. Good evening. So um I am so excited to be able to present to you uh the first District of Oak Bay Human Resources Plan Framework. Uh and it's a five-year plan.
I'll ask you just move the microphone ever so slightly closer to you, just.
Okay, is that better?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a five-year plan. And I'm bringing it forward for council's information, but I also have um components in the plan that will have budget requests attached to them. So I think it's important that you see those before we get into budget deliberations um next week. Uh but before I start my presentation, I just want to um just put put some context to this um to start. The District of Oak Bay has been lagging behind for years in its employment employment practices. We have uh nonexistent or very old and outdated policies, employee policies, job descriptions and systems and more. Prior to 2019, when this council approved funding for corporate training and development in the budget, we did not even have a formal training plan for staff. When we're talking about one of council's priorities is um providing service excellence, um there is going to be uh a lot of elements in this plan that sort of weave through that. Um we've made some good strides over the past year or so, but it's time to modernize the organization so that we're more competitive as an employer, to better engage our staff, who are our most valuable assets, and to mitigate risk for the uh organization. So the HR plan framework is a plan to move forward. So what is a human resources plan? The overall purpose of the human resources plan is to ensure that the District of Oak Bay has adequate human resources to meet the district's strategic goals. So it's really about having the right people with the right skills at the right time for the organization. And that kind of speaks to what you were talking about earlier about an HR plan, but it's um it's a component of the HR plan. Um and uh and really, it's critical that we position the District of Oak Bay as an employer of choice to attract and retain the best talent uh and to ensure future success and sustainability. This is critically important right now. We have a war for talent on. Um we've got a very, very competitive job market, and um we have to do whatever we can to position ourselves uh so that we can attract the best and keep the best. We have an excellent staff and uh we want to be able to put programs together to protect that. So a human resources plan is flexible. It evolves over time. It's linked to council decision-making and the needs of the organization. Uh is multi-component and multi-year, so it's a long game. Uh and it's proactive proactive versus reactive. So what you see, what you see uh up on the screen is a human resources planning template. And so what we are uh recommending is that we focus on four different areas through the life of the plan. The first is human resources planning. The second is attracting and retaining great staff. The third is promoting performance excellence, and the fourth is commitment to employee safety and wellness. So the first slide, it it really kind of speaks to what you were talking about earlier. And um workforce planning will ensure the district has staff with the right skills, knowledge and experience to achieve its short-term and long-term objectives. Workforce planning will be tied to the district's strategic objectives with the staffing levels closely linked to service levels. So um uh what we're what we're really proposing that we do here is that we develop a workforce plan, including forecasted staffing needs by department. Uh and then we we also have to consider in the mix, we have to consider uh uh projected retirements too. Uh we expect that there are going to be a number of retirements over the next five years, so we have to factor all of that in. And that also um so will sort of inform the development of a succession plan for the organization as well. So they're linked. And um in each of these slides, you'll see um there's there's five boxes, one for each year. And um where you see stars, that really denotes that the work is going to be done in-house. And where you'll see uh dollar figures is basically what what we're moving forward in in terms of requests for budget. Next slide is recruitment, selection and onboarding. Having consistent, open and transparent recruitment and selection practices improves the organization's success in attracting and hiring the best staff to work for the district. Currently, we have no policies and procedures in this area. And we recommend that we develop policies and procedures. And we also deliver, develop and deliver training to supervisors and managers. So we're asking $7,000 for 2020 to develop the policy and procedures and the training will be done in-house. So this, you'll, you'll see a bit of a common theme here in that some of this, we're going to be asking, we're going to be requesting, making requests for funding for policy development. And that's because we don't have policies in place that support these programs. And if we don't have policies in place, then what happens is that you have inconsistent decisions that are being made, which can be costly for an organization. And it can also really, really impact on employee morale. So we really need to be building a foundation here. So learning and development. A learning and development program will ensure that we have a competent, skilled workforce that will accomplish the organization's goals and deliver service excellence. This will also contribute to the building of the skills of our employees to aid in promotional opportunities in succession planning. So what we're proposing that we do is develop a policy and procedures. And that would be $3,500 in 2020. And then council-approved budget, ongoing budget for $35,000 a year. And we've done a lot of really, really good training in 2019. And staff are very, very grateful for council investing those, those funds into training and development. But what we're also wanting to ask is $20,000, which becomes a permanent increase to the operating budget for tuition reimbursement. And that is really, you know, trying to develop a culture of ongoing learning for employees. So we have some employees that are working on their red seal, some employees that are working on diploma programs, degree programs. And it's an opportunity to just, you know, say to our employees, hey, we want to invest in you and we recognize ongoing learning as part of our culture at the District of Oak Bay. Employee engagement. Engaged employees performing at their best have the greatest impact on organizational outcomes. Employee engagement leads to reduced absenteeism, increased productivity, enhanced customer feedback and a stronger ability to attract and retain staff. So what we're proposing to do here is we would like to be able to conduct employee surveys so that we can establish a baseline in terms of what our employee engagement levels are. And we would like to be able to run a survey every three years. And as part of that, we want to be able to develop an employee engagement action plan so that we can have a planned approach to trying to increase those numbers over time. Employee recognition. The recognition of employee efforts and achievements in long service will ensure that staff feel valued by the organization, which will lead to higher levels of productivity, motivation and employee engagement. We are recommending in this plan that we basically get into, we're trying to shift a culture with these sorts of programs. And so we're trying to, we're wanting to promote informal recognition. This is a huge employee engagement driver. Recognition is so important to our employees. And the other thing that we're, we're requesting is that we want to be able to have a QP long-service recognition program. And we're requesting that that just be a permanent increase in our operating budget as well for $2,000 a year. We'd like to be able to have an event where we recognize QP staff once a year where council is involved in that event. We have employees that have been working here for 25, 30, 35 years that have never been formally recognized by the organization. So we think that that will go a long way. It doesn't take a lot to engage employees, you know? But they really, really need to know that the organization values them. And this is just one way, one small way that we can do that. Competitive total compensation. It's critically important that the district is competitive in the wages and benefits that they pay. Having competitive total compensation practices ensures that we're, we're going to be able to attract and retain high-quality staff. And so what we're recommending that we do here is develop a total compensation policy. And council actually put forward a resolution in 2016 for us to go out every three years to do an exempt salary survey. And that, that it come, that, you know, whatever recommendation comes out by council in terms of the results that are received would be sort of paying at the mid-level. And so I have gone out and done an exempt salary survey. I just got the final information today. So I will be pulling that information together and that will be coming before council shortly. The offering of flexible work arrangements to employees can boost morale and improve their physical and mental well-being. This will also increase our ability to attract, retain and motivate experienced and high-performing employees. All that we're suggesting here is that we initiate discussions and explore the option of flexible work arrangements here at the district. This is incredibly attractive to staff and it speaks to work-life balance. It's really, really very important to the younger generations. And this is something that we're actually losing our staff to organizations now because of some of these special, special incentives and these, these types of work arrangements. So it's something that we need, I believe we need to consider. Performance feedback and evaluation. Again, sort of going back to council's priority of providing service excellence. We, we do performance appraisals in some areas of the organization but not in others. There are some employees that have never received a performance appraisal. So, you know, we really, really, this is a really important area for us. Ongoing performance feedback and annual evaluation is an important aspect in managing employee performance, which affects the success of the district in achieving its strategic objectives. Role clarity is so important and the establishment of goals. And if we want to sort of be a high-performing organization, then we need to be able to support that with these types of programs. So what we're recommending is that we develop a policy procedures and a really good tool to evaluate performance. But the other really important thing here is that we have got extremely outdated job descriptions in many cases at the district. And that, you know, employees need to know what their role is. The role clarification is really, really important. So what we would like to do is to introduce a process during the performance evaluation period where the supervisor or manager reviews a job description with the employee to, to make it current. And then we have to train our managers and supervisors to be able to conduct effective evaluations and to be able to have those performance discussions. And last but not least, we have an occupational health and safety policy that is 30 years old. The program is 30 years old. And an updated occupational health and safety program will ensure that the district meets its legislative and risk management requirements. This will also contribute to the promotion of a safety-first workplace culture and hopefully lower workplace injury rates. This is a tremendous risk for us and we really, really need to ensure that we are compliant, compliant with WorkSafe BC regulations. So what we're recommending is that we conduct a review of current OHNS policy and program. We need to identify any gaps that exist. And we have to have, we have to do a total update of our policies and, and procedures. And then managers and supervisors have to be trained. So that represents about $30,000 in 2020. So the impact to the total budget would be one-time expense for 2020 of $74,000, 2023, $20,000. And then we're requesting a permanent increase to the operating budget for that tuition reimbursement in 2020 of $20,000. 2021, the tuition reimbursement plus the recognition program for, so 2020, $22,000 for each year after that. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Donnelly. And again, we're not approving or not approving this at this point. It's really here to get clarification. There will be little budget line items that we have to consider moving forward. So are there questions, Ms. Donnelly, on this? Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Ms. Donnelly. Wow. I guess, just to start, I mean, you started off saying that you have very dated policies and as you progress through this, I think it went much deeper than dated policies. So if I could kind of step it right back, if we don't have updated job evaluations or job descriptions and performance evaluations, I'm thinking we don't have a complete skills inventory listing of, of the staff then and the capacity in, in the departments. And I appreciate with all you've gone through, and you've been very thorough in this and where the gaps are, but what wasn't included also was productivity. And I, I ask the question because normally that is something that's also included, although generally, I guess, you take, you would have the other items first. But do we even have a total identification of skills in inventory, task descriptions, labor burdens with those? Or is that all?
I think we know the answer to that question. Ms. Donnelly?
Through your worship. No, no, we're early days. We're trying, we're, we're really at a point right now where we're, we're just building a foundation. The other problem that we have is that we have really outdated systems. So even with our HR planning, it's really, really going to be difficult unless we get new systems to be able to capture any data. I have to tell you that so much of our work, so much of my work right now, I have to do manually. So we just don't have the capacity here. We don't have those sophisticated systems to be able to do that at this time.
Counselor Green?
I'm shaking my head not because I don't disagree with you, because I, I have great empathy. It's kind of shocking when you get right down into it, isn't it? I mean, in my, in my estimation, it's a bit shocking. I do have HR experience and I've come from, I worked both for the provincial and federal governments and they've been doing these things for 25, 30 years. I know the city of Victoria has a flexible work schedule and other municipalities as well. In North Sanich, in 2005, we implemented what's called ELF, Employee Learning Fund, and that was to do what you had identified here. It was for ongoing employee development. And that was a fund of $65,000 a year. And that was in 2005 for a community of not 12,000 people. So, yeah, I'm, I'm taken aback, but it, it isn't something I didn't think I, I sort of had a spidey sense for a number of years about it. And I'm just very grateful now that you're here and that you are able to assist the municipality in this way. Could you just tell me or remind us, what year was the first HR manager hired in Oak Bay?
Through your worship? 2016.
2016?
Yeah, I started just beginning of 2017.
Thank you.
And if I may, just to add, just to touch on what you said about flexible work with the city of Victoria and just getting back to my, my comments on flexible work, it may not work in some areas. So if, you know, with Victoria, they have it in some areas and they, and they can't do it in others. So those, those will all have to be considerations when we look at this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You did a good job of articulating the rationale for the budget ask here for sure. Any other questions at this time? Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, worship. Through you to staff, the, the presentation that Ms. Donnelly gave is included in our package and I was just wondering whether it was going to be circulated to council.
Ms. Donnelly?
Through your worship, yes, it will.
Your worship, it will also be loaded up onto the website subsequent to tonight's meeting.
Thank you very much. Counselor Bree, wait?
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Donnelly. And like Counselor Green, I'm quite gobsmacked at some of the information that we've, that we've received here tonight. Can you just remind me the number of part-time and full-time employees we have as a municipality?
Ms. Donnelly?
Through your worship, we have about 107, 170, including police and fire.
That's full-time, but what about part-time as well?
We have very few part-time employees.
We do have a large auxiliary staff that.
We have, we have, depending on the time of year, around 300 auxiliary staff.
So almost 500 staff?
So, yeah.
That we deal with on a yearly basis, our day in and day out? And, and to not have had an HR manager until 2016 speaks volumes as to how much was of that was off the side of somebody's desk in the municipality. I think that the one for me, the biggest one was the health and safety risk. That's a big, or the health and safety that hasn't been looked at in over 30 years, you said. And that is a really big risk to me. And that's something that we definitely have to look at. So, I mean, I'm, I'm sad to see that, I'm sad to hear that we haven't had anything in place for so many years, but, but I'm sadder to see that, that the amount of money that it's going to cost us to catch up. But I think it's important that we do. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Counselor Zelka?
Thank you, Chair. Through you to staff, thank you for the presentation. I'm pleased to see succession planning always being included. And I wanted to ask, is the scope of this HR plan that I support to include police and fire and possibly, and parks and rec culture as separate entities or would they be all included in the same plan? What is, what is your, what is your anticipation?
Through your worship, I'm anticipating that there will be some elements that will be applied to all areas. Police and fire, for example, have their own training budgets. So, you know, there will be some areas that, that apply. Certainly not flexible work arrangements. I think that would be pretty difficult in their line of work. But, yeah, certainly we're looking, we're looking at all areas, but as they say, police and fire have their own, they even have their own recognition events.
Counselor Zelka?
And, and I imagine parks, rec and culture may also have their own unique requirements. And, and I presume since, if I remember correctly, half of our staff is really in that area. And they do such a great job employing so many Oak Bay young youth and younger people and helping them along. I presume they already have some aspects of this in place, I'm guessing. I just want to confirm that.
But they are, they are definitely part of this whole plan. That this is, parks and rec and culture is a, is the largest area of the District of Oak Bay, so, so yes.
Thank you. Counselor Patterson, you head to there?
Thank you, Mayor. And to Ms. Donnelly, through you, just, could you perhaps speak to software or platforms that are available to you? I mean, obviously, we're not going to go back and reinvent everything. There, there should be platforms available. Could you just speak to what you would want to be following?
Well, we've, we've talked, actually, our Director of Finance is going to be bringing forward a budget, the request for additional software. And there will be, maybe not, I'm not quite sure of the plan there, but there, there is. is going to be at some point the ask for an HRAS component, the Human Resource Information System component. So I'm hoping that we're going to be able to move that, an element of that forward at some point, yeah.
Thank you, Kelsey Patterson. I'm just going to ask one simple question because it's outside of my experience. What is employee engagement measuring? What is that measuring?
It measures all kinds of things. And what I would like to see is, I'm looking at if this is approved, looking at getting BC Statistics to do this work for us. They've done a lot of work with employee surveys. And basically, employees are given a survey with a number of different questions that measure recognition, job satisfaction, relationship with their manager. There's a whole array of different areas that they will ask questions on. The, the goal is to get a really high response rate so they get a good sampling of information. But basically, what they will do for us is we'll do the survey, and then we get information back that just gives us percentages, like an overall percentage of employee engagement. And it depends on how much we want to drill down. It's more expensive, the more, the more information that you, you need. But, but they will actually come and they will present to council and present to the leadership group or whoever we want them to, to just basically lay out. And, and they will, they will tell us where the different areas are that will be the, sort of the, the employee engagement drivers that are going to really be beneficial for us to focus on.
Thank you very much. And since I asked a question, I'll just hold the floor for a second. I'll just use it to express my appreciation for your efforts to tackle this and, and also just my appreciation frankly of all the, the department heads and managers who have done what they've done in most places that don't have more formalized processes, done a remarkably good job in terms of managing the staff on a day-to-day basis, parks and rec, public works. These are all areas that without those systems are still doing a remarkably good job of just doing that. And I appreciate at the end the chance to add some tools potentially to that, to that mix. So thank you. Counselor Breatway?
Thank you, and through you, Mayor, before I move receipt, just getting on something that the mayor was asking about, about the surveys. Logistically, how do we have our employees who don't have a computer in front of them? So for public works and for parks and rec, how do we get them to participate in a survey like that?
Through your worship, we have to, I have to actually, we've, I've actually talked to BC Stats about this, and so it's actually quite a bit of work to coordinate. So, you know, we will be actually having to mail out surveys. And that's one of the reasons why, you know, it's really good to get an outside person doing it because there's a lot of work involved. But no, every employee will be surveyed. But the, again, how we're going to do it is sort of a logistical thing that we're going to have to work out.
Thank you. Counselor Green?
Thank you, through you, Chair, too, Ms. Donnelly. Will you be developing also a system for data tracking and quantification? So, you know, each year or every, you know, every, for the life of this plan, you're able to bring quantified information and data back to councils, successive councils, so that you keep building the case for why this is so important?
Yes.
Thank you.
I do need a motion to receive at some point, so...
I'll make a motion that council receive the memorandum from the Chief Administrative Officer dated January 30th, 2020 for information.
Second?
Second, thank you. Counselor Zalka?
Just confirming that since there are two memorandums dated January 30th on the CAO, this is the first one.
Yes, correct. Number two on the agenda. Some motions on the table. We've added questions, we've had some discussions. Is there anybody from the audience who wishes to come forward at this time? Any questions or comments? Yes, please come forward. Just, if you can just come up here to the far side, I know we've got a little bit of a tight squeeze to get in here. If you just state your name and municipality of residence on the record, I think we have the spelling of your name already.
James Sultanam, South Oak Bay. Through you, Chair, I have a question. Is $20,000 enough or too much money for training? And I'm quite happy to see that there's provision for that. It's just that I don't know what the rationale was for the $20,000 per year. And the second point is, I would like to have seen staff ask for budget allocation for, for systems, for technology. I think it's absolutely important.
Thank you, Mr. Sultanam. Ms. Donnelly, you have a question here, but how, how that number came about?
Yeah. We, we actually have a training budget right now of $35,000 a year. And we wanted to sort of, with the tuition, and the $20,000 is for tuition reimbursement, that was just a figure that we came up with. And typically, organizations are spending between $300 and $500 per employee. And this takes us out to about $360 an employee. And I'm sorry, what was the other question?
It was more a question of expression that he wished that there was a technology component as well in this piece. But I'm sure that will follow as we, as we, as we strengthen our systems here.
It will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sultanam. Anybody else wish to come forward at this time? Seeing, all right, thank you very much. We're on to item number three on the agenda then. Oh, I have to call the question on here. I'll, I'll learn how to share eventually. Any, any other discussion? I think then I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, none opposed? Thank you. And item number three on the agenda, budget staffing recommendations. And this is Ms., Ms. Hopkins?
Your worship, sorry, just before we move on, I think there was also a recommendation to receive the presentation from the Manager of Human Resources.
We can, we can do that as well.
I'll make that recommendation.
Moved and seconded. And it will be put up on the website as well, as I understand it. Will it form part of the minutes? Or will it just be on the website?
Your worship, it will not form part of the, part of the minutes, but it will be available on the website.
Okay, thank you. Just for clarity, just a motion to receive, so there's no actions attached here, just that we, that we have received it. Any discussion? Questions? All right, all those in favor, opposed, none opposed? Thank you. Item number three on the agenda, Ms. Varela, I believe this is over to you.
Thank you, your worship. So I'd like to begin with saying no decision is being asked of council tonight beyond the exclusion of a committee or commission clerk. That had come up in previous conversations related to the commission and committee review. So staff just wanted to clarify expectations in case any council was hoping for that position that we actually haven't included in, in the 2020 budget at this point, because we want time to see how the adjusted terms of reference or establishing bylaws, your policy that you're about to see in the next few weeks, the procedure bylaw, as we develop those protocols that you've seen some drafts of. We want time to actually see if that position is required, and so we would bring that forward as 2021. This information is being provided to council in advance of the February 6th Special Committee of the Whole, which you will see your first kick at the draft financial plan. In it, staff are recommending seven additional FTEs. That sounds like a big number. You had considered the four FTEs related to water and sewer in your previous discussions related to those utilities. The three new asks, a Deputy Director of Corporate Services, a Deputy Director of Engineering, and a Facilities Manager are all linked to succession, a lack thereof, risk management. You heard about some of the things tonight. It's courageous for staff to bring these discussions forward to identify these gaps in an organization. As we strive to modernize the district's operations, we need to have these conversations. The capacity gap that we have, we simply can't get everything done. As we discover these gaps, we have to highlight them. We have professional responsibilities to identify those, and that's why we're having this discussion tonight. We also recognize that asset management is, of course, the, the thought that we have to take care of what we can't necessarily see under the ground or in our buildings. Those are all mainstreamed ideas now, and we simply don't have the resources to manage these assets as we would like to. So we'd like to emphasize really that this is a bare bones ask for these three additional positions. You have a management team before you that are not mere managers, as you will find in often bigger organizations. These people have their sleeves rolled up on a daily basis, doing, producing, writing, and managing. So right now, we consider the staffing levels that we have to be unsustainable, and they're requiring us to be reactive until we stop and have these discussions. We would like to shift to what we, as staff, have determined to be a more responsible and proactive approach. So while we talk about the risks in how we've undertaken practices here, we've had discussions about the deferred maintenance. We've talked about our aged infrastructure. We're talking about our outdated and efficient, inefficient systems. We've identified inadequate records management, and council has put forward a budget last year to get us on that track. This will be a multi-year task, actually developing a system on the local government management framework. And we have outdated regulatory tools, as you well know, as we're starting to talk about pieces of a zoning bylaw or pieces of, or a, a policy or a piece of a policy, things like that. So while we are talking about three new positions beyond the four FTEs, and I would like to point out that we actually have a third-party report that will be coming forward for council's further consideration on those four FTEs related to water and sewer and the capacity in Public Works and Engineering Department as a whole. So there is more information forthcoming on those. The math, so we talked about these new positions costing annually $995,000, representing a 2.42 tax increase. That's because part of that was dealt with in water and sewer. So I'll just hand it over to the Director of Finance if he just wants to chime in a bit there on that explanation.
Mr. Payne?
Yes, thank you, your worship. So the total annual cost is $995,000. Approximately $600,000 of that would be funded from taxes. The water, there's three and a half positions through water and sewer. Part of the sewer is funded through, through taxation, as we, we know that the sewer utility is partially funded by taxation. And then the .5 would be the storm drain as well. So hope we didn't confuse things there. So basically, the taxation funding portion of this would be the Deputy Director of Corporate Services, the Deputy Director of Engineering, the Facilities Manager, .5 of a sewer, a storm drain, and whatever portion of the sewer position that gets funded by taxation.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Ms. Varela?
One final point, your worship, that's also detailed in the report, is the way in, not only are we trying to modernize this organization and our operations, we're playing a big game of catch-up, but we're also expanding service as we go. So we're losing traction on either end. So some of the things that we've included is the expanded number of meetings. Council has had to really roll up its sleeves in the last year, and we've brought a lot of information forward with 35% increase in those meetings, number of meetings. You're seeing FOI requests up by 50%. You've expanded your asset management budget by over 10%, winning $800,000. We have significant multi-year, large-scale projects that we've never had to deal with at the same time we're trying to do everything else. So for example, the Marina lease, Todd House, things like that. Getting our contract tracks and agreements tracked and in order, those are all pieces we are trying to deal with. Requests for service connections, if we want to talk about that level of service to our citizenry. In 2019, or 2018, customer demand exceeded what the district, district could provide. So we had 209 requests for service connections, and we provided 148. Components of municipal facilities have become fundamentally obsolescent from lack of ongoing maintenance and upgrading over the decades. So we've got some big challenges, both in expanding service levels and in playing catch-up. That's why the risks are before you. Again, we're not asking for any decisions tonight. We just wanted to have this conversation in advance of the February 6th meeting. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Ms. Varela. And I will just note that, Aegis, appreciate you, you bringing this forward. We've made the ask as a council of staff to, to bring forward your best recommendations as to where you think the operational needs of the organization have. We've done that well with, I think, asset management and some of the larger challenges we've had. And I, I know some people balk at the, at the notion of bringing this forward, but I think it's critically important that those recommendations are made with the best professional advice, and then this body can have a chance to, to consider that in the context of all the pieces that are there. And I'd also just reflect that I'm in this office a lot, and I see a lot of the senior managers who are working very late, very long hours here on the weekends. And I, I mean, I appreciate that, and I, and I certainly, it's reflective of a very keen and energized and results-focused team of employees. But I also recognize that at some point you have to scale back expectations or, to keep a healthy workplace. So I'm not predisposed what is the right mix of that, but I do just want to express my appreciation for the work that is put in by the staff. Counselor Green?
Thank you. And I will attest to the overtime issue. I often walk by the building at night. There are lights on. On the weekends, there are lights on, and they're in the senior managers' offices because I can see them. I try not to peek. I'm hiding in the bush just below you. But I, I also know that overtime, that, that level of overtime is not sustainable, and it's not healthy. And if we want to set an example as a council for healthy workplace practices, we need to, to be very concerned about that. Thank you.
Counsel Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor. And through you, I, thank you for the report. And prior to receiving it, I just have a few questions or clarifications, maybe things to think about before budget time. But on page two and paragraph three, you talk about mitigating operational and procedural risks. I'm not sure that I'm really clear on what that is. If I could get perhaps a little bit more of an explanation?
Ms. Varela?
Certainly, your worship. So a top-of-mind example is the 30-year-old health and safety plan. So that's one piece. Certainly, our records management, when we have to go back for Freedom of Information requests, how are those records being kept? Can we access them? Systems, policies, corporate knowledge that has only been kept in some longstanding employees' heads, how are we actually getting that into our records so that they're actually tools that we can, we can turn to? It becomes a bit of a question when you're running without those things, without those resources, without those systems. You're in a bit of a false economy because you're having directors spend time doing more administrative duties, trying to find or access your records, running on an ad hoc basis because we haven't got those pieces formalized. And that's been the longstanding practice. So it's that idea of, are we getting the best people doing the right jobs? Or do we need to stop, pause, give ourselves enough resources, a bare bones request, if you will, to get us to the point where we can be more functionally efficient and minimize those operational risks?
Thank you. If I could continue?
Yes.
Just some of the metrics we're using, and perhaps by the time we get to budgets, we might want to rethink them, because I guess numbers of meetings, I, I think we all around the council table appreciate there have been more meetings this year than there there were previously. But I guess it's really hours, too. So, you know, just to think about, and Freedom of Information requests, numbers of them, 50%. I mean, that could be a lot, or it could be very few. So just to put things perhaps into context, and service connections, I'm not clear as to whether those are service connections where we get fees, and there are revenues that will be offsetting some of the costs. So I... And so, you know, those may be clarifications that will come with the budgeting. And the one perhaps concerning thing to me in the report, and Ms. Donnelly touched on it also in her presentation, and that is that, to my mind, safety isn't or shouldn't be dependent upon budget. And the way it's phrased, it almost makes it seem like council has options in this. And really, WorkSafe BC, Occupational Health and Safety, or Provincial Jurisdiction, there are guidelines. I, you know, I certainly would not want to give the, convey the impression, at least from my seat at the council table, that this was something that I considered optional. I think that this is something that it's mandated, it's not optional. And I think safety is a top concern and priority, so I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. Is there Counselor Braithwaite?
Thank you, and through you, Mayor, thanks for the report. I'm, again, gobsmacked at the 2.2% increase in taxes that this would entail. It just puts us in such a bad position going forward to even put anything else into our budget for the year when you're starting off with a 2.2% increase. And one of my questions would be, if this did go forward in the budget and we agreed to this 2.2% increase, how does it affect the amount of money that we're going to have to still have put aside for consultants? Or does it affect it?
I'll actually hand this one over to the Director. I think one of the big, we certainly made great strides in the five-year financial plan last year in bringing council a better plan. You've still always had to struggle with the idea of making these decisions in the full context of a five-year financial plan. I think you're going to be really pleased with the product that's coming forward. So that idea of considering these asks in the context of the overall budget, you'll have that luxury this year. And then I'll refer over to the Finance Director for any additional comments, if that meets your needs. Counselor Braithwaite?
Mr. Payne?
Thank you, your worship. The leadership team has worked closely together to ensure that the ongoing operating budget has adequate consulting funds for irregular or just regular needs throughout the year. Where there is a special initiative or a project that's irregular in nature, uncommon, or large, typically we fund those projects separately, and they're usually via a consultant. They'll be funded from accumulated surplus to avoid the tax volatility that would result from that. So you'll see evidence of that in the financial plan. A lot of the special initiatives that council have put before staff, they'll be funded from accumulated surplus. I'll try not to get too technical to answer your question here, but essentially, what council needs to keep an eye on with that is surplus isn't a sustainable funding source. So the amount that we choose to spend from it is finite. However, I can look back historically and see how much surplus have we returned on a regular basis and determine, is this reasonable, or should we be concerned about it? So we do that analysis in the financial plan and communicate that.
Thank you, and I only bring it up because I know from past experience that this is where we get a lot of, the most pushback from the public in regards to the amount of money that we spend on consultants, et cetera. So thank you for your answer.
Any other questions of the committee, Counselor Green, then Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, and through you, just quickly, what was the intended role of the committee's commissions clerk? Could you refresh my memory?
Ms. Rela?
So it would have-
Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Sorry, Corinne. So it would have taken potentially some of the load off of the Corporate Services Department, which we still might make that ask down the road, but I think we really need the time to make that request in good conscience, to understand how can we actually apply that the resources that we have right now existing to those bodies and do that research, look at it with a careful eye over the next year, and come back to council with that discussion next year.
Thank you.
Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, your worship. Just commenting on just the final portion of the analysis section in this report, it just, it makes note that, noted that the funding of the proposed positions would place the district on par with the average staff levels per capita comparison municipalities in the region. And I understand that staff have proposed to bring more detailed information forward during the budgeting process. I would like to make the request that this information that's provided here, or this, the comparison, be provided to council at that time.
I heard a yes, so.
Absolutely, your worship.
Counselor Zalkin?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you very much to staff for bringing all this information forward. I, again, applaud you on the transparency and openness and just helping us all to understand some of the realities on the ground that you're facing. And I appreciate also getting the connect.okebey.ca website up and running with this information on it in a consultative approach. Very much appreciate that as well. And I do look forward to seeing what the results of that consultative approach will be with the public, not only through the upcoming meetings, but also through that process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just, I have a couple of quick questions. One was just the Facilities Manager. If there's just some clarification, what that role, is that someone actually going and helping maintain the buildings? Or is it a, maybe Mr. Haran, is that the place I would turn to?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I think what I need to do is have a better description for that position's full role. So what the intention there is, as an exempt manager, is a direct report to me, is Director of Engineering Services. And that person's responsibilities would be, in part, implementing, developing and implementing the facilities master plan. So in other words, taking on the role of the municipality's facilities and the long-term planning and maintenance for those. And then there would also be an aspect to that role, which would be related to the rest of the assets in the district, so related to engineering services. And so the three-to-10-year plan of what's the capital improvement program going to look like. And then that position works in conjunction, the intention is, with the other position that's there, the Deputy Director of Engineering Services, which would be planning capital works in the one-to-two-year timeframe. So in other words, putting a program together of shelf-ready projects for Mr. Brozak's team to implement, and then for contracting out purposes.
Thank you. I certainly appreciate the need for, when you put a bunch, $800,000 or so into a budget, you need people to actually run that. Counselor Patterson, go ahead. I'm not done yet, but I'll go to you after. Do you want some clarification on that answer?
Yeah, just on the facilities management, there are different terminologies used for Facilities Manager. Is this like a Facilities Management designation through one of the recognized programs for Facilities Management, say versus property administration?
Mr. Haran?
Through you, Chair, that's a level of detail that we haven't achieved yet. I think the intention was actually not necessarily to be, to have in-house Facilities Management skillset, as you described. I think we're leaning more towards a skillset that is frankly similar to mine in terms of the ability to handle multiple functional areas and deliver results in terms of not only management of people and resources within the municipality, so in my engineering team, but also to work well with contractors that have those specific skillsets for specific tasks. So in reality, we're talking about someone with engineering or technical experience that can handle asset management planning and has that supervisory management skillset as well to support the team that we have going forward.
So is that the Deputy Director, or is that the Facilities Manager? That description sounded more like the-
That, so I'm sorry for the confusion. The two positions need to be considered, the two separate positions, but they work in conjunction with each other in support of engineering services. The Deputy Director of Engineering or the Manager of Engineering, and these names can change, is meant to be a one-to-two-year focus for capital work. So for example, right now, we don't necessarily have shelf-ready, construction-ready projects for even this year for our public works and any contractors that we would use, or for next year, which is not good practice. So we would need an in-year and next-year project planning capability that we don't have at the moment. Or we do have, but it's me and very few others that can make that happen. And then in conjunction with that, we would have the person that would wear the hat of asset management for the engineering infrastructure, so the underground, the roads, and so on, as well as the buildings for the municipality owns. So this is the person that would worry about and prepare the work that says, in five years, in 15 years, this is what's required in terms of asset management, sustainable funding, and then would develop the, kind of tee up what the project list would be for that one-to-two-year outlook.
Okay, thank you. And just for my clarification, there's some of that facilities expertise exists in Parks, Rec and Culture, just managing the more complicated things that break down more often, sort of environments. Does that, do you see any chance of overlap between these skillsets? And that we could leverage some of those skillsets and maybe provide some additional value to the Parks, Rec and Culture Department in that?
Absolutely, Chair. I think that would be part of the, part of defining that person's role and defining how we operationalize what that person is doing related to facilities. There's a service delivery aspect to Facilities Management, which is already in place. So as things break down in Parks, Rec and Culture facilities, they have staff that do that work here. Public Works as well responds to failures up here, as well as we hire contractors, electricians, or whatever the case may be, to come in and do repairs on this building and others. So that would be, that person would have a role to play in coordinating and managing a higher-level activity around that. In terms, including identifying, for example, gaps where that day-to-day maintenance potentially isn't getting done because there aren't resources in place. So being able to identify what resources are required and how to deliver on those gaps.
Thank you for the clarification. I guess the only other couple of comments I would have is the, I think we all have a lot of work to do just to make sure that we're doing the right things to drive the operational needs down. And, you know, I look at how many meetings we've had here, and so much of that has been foundational changes, trying to get policies in place from this so that we can delegate to staff those decision-making criteria and clarify for everybody, homeowners and developers, what they're allowed to build, and have little less of the, less reports needed to be written, less meetings needed to be had. It's a, we're kind of in a short-term pain, longer-term gain model, as far as I see it. And I guess I would just, you know, I appreciate, you know, talking to staff that that's, you know, the vision is how do we make this all more efficient, and that will have long-term dividends. So I think that's probably the framework I'm looking at this as, is how is this fitting in to that big piece? And that would apply to things like Freedom of Information requests as well, I think. I think as we improve our clarity of processes, we make our process more transparent, applications more transparent, that drives down those FOI-type requests as well. So I think it's synergistic, so as we have to do this work to get it to the point where we're not, we don't have the demand that's driving some of these workflows. That's all my comments. Counselor Green?
Just to add, and thank you, Mayor, that I think it's really important about how we strategically communicate the situation that drives this kind of change and enhancement potentially. So I think that, you know, following up on Counselor Braithwaite's comments around the public having a good understanding of the whys and the wherefores, I think that's important. So we, I think we need to talk about that down the road, about how we communicate these changes, if they're approved ultimately. And it would also be helpful to have a brief job description for each of the new positions so that people understand the thrust of the work that will be driving that kind of change. Thank you.
Ms. Rela?
I think that's a really good comment, your worship. Again, that can be part of that more robust discussion that we'll bring forward. If I may, I'd like to just point out one, I talked a lot about it in the report, but some of the things that the other directors have said here tonight really reaffirm the idea of one of our risks is our lack of succession planning. So clearly, Mr. Haran and Ms. Hopkins have no succession planning. We also have an inability to delegate their duties. If they were away on sick or holidays, which they don't get to take, or an extended absence that was unforeseen, we actually have obligations associated with those roles that we actually can't provide. There's just no capacity to backfill for those positions. And the other one, the other risk that I'd like to highlight for both the public and council is the idea of staff retention. And so I'm trying to be very candid about the fact we have made great strides in the last year in advancing this organization. Those levels of effort by this team are unsustainable, and that presents a really big risk to this organization. So just to summarize, some additional risks beyond those operation, more operational pieces.
All right, thank you. We're just in a motion to receive at some point, and I'll invite the public to come forward before we call the question.
I'll make a motion to receive, and then I just have a quick comment.
Sure, sir. Move in a second. Thank you.
I think it's really important also when communicating with our residents that we don't fall into the terminology that professionals use. So succession planning means, you know, not everyone is familiar with that term. So as long as we clarify some of that terminology, I think that's also important as well. And risks around, what did you just say? I'm sorry.
Risks that are beyond the more operational components, such as that succession planning. So someone who can actually step into the role and get up to speed.
Right. In other words, no relief, no backup.
Right. Ability to delegate those duties on the shorter term. So for example, if Ms. Hopkins is away, who's taking oaths, swearing affidavits? Who's taking receipt of documents if we're being served? Who's taking, you know, taking control of the agenda, those sorts of things? Sadly, it's me, and I'm not as good at it as she is, so. And then the other risk was staff retention.
Staff retention, which means keeping staff long-term. So it's just, I just worry sometimes we use the language so easily because we're familiar with it. So when we're communicating outwardly, plain language is really helpful, I think. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table. So I will just invite the public to come forward if anybody wishes to speak.
Oak Bay.
Welcome, Mr. Ross.
I'd like to just address briefly a couple of points. One is this freedom of information. Now, I can imagine that it's a bit of a problem going down into the basement and combing through dusty file cabinets to find out an answer for somebody who is just playing games. So there are a lot of people who, I think, get pleasure out of going after somebody for a freedom of information. But by the same token, there is, there can be, on the part of staff, I guess, to say, well, I can't be bothered with that guy. He's a nuisance that I'm not going to answer. The better way, I think, is the kind of response that I got a few days ago from Mr. Horn. Now, I asked him a question, quite a simple question, I think, and he banged it back, the answer, the next morning, and that was the end of it. I mean, there was no confrontation, there was no attempt to do anything except get an answer. Now, I would encourage staff, if they can, get an answer out so that it doesn't get confrontational and into the freedom of information mode. That's one thing. The second thing is, in your, your job descriptions, but when you're looking for candidates, I would recommend that in some cases, you want someone, let us say, someone who would work for Mr. Horn as an engineer coming up, a junior engineer, whatever, but that you look for, in that case and other cases, for people who have other qualifications so that you have a certain- so that you have a certain amount of prudent redundancy in the organization. And maybe somebody who is working for someone else has some skills, and they can be plugged into another job when that person is sick or retires or whatever. So if the person has these other skills, to me, that's a bonus when you're hiring them. That's about all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. And I will say, I think 99% of the information requests are not FOI requests, but we still have a number of them. And I think, I like your term prudent redundancy. We'll add that to, we'll add that to the succession planning under our list of things to include. Anyone else wish to come forward? Seeing no one, then we'll go back. You have a motion on the table at the moment to receive this report. All those in favor, opposed, non-opposed. Looking for motion to adjourn?
Move adjournment.
Your worship, sorry to interrupt. There was one more motion requested, and that was to give direction on the Committee and Commissions Clerk.
Right. Sorry. Further, that council directs staff to exclude.
I'll make that motion. Second?
Yes, Counsel.
A point of information. Since, are we sitting as councilor or are we sitting as committee of the whole?
Committee of the whole.
So we're just recommending, or we actually, will they be actioning this tonight?
So even if we're committee, or council at the moment, we're just recommending things going into the budget. So this is just a guide of what's going into the budget. So we have a motion to not include that, excluded that, the Committee and Commission Clerk. Further discussion, all those in favor, opposed, non-opposed. Thank you very much for that.
Move adjournment.
Move adjournment.
Second?
Seconded, thank you. All those in favor, opposed, non-opposed. Thank you. Thank you for the people who came out tonight, much appreciated, and to all of the staff. And I believe we have an in-camera discussion. If I'm going to have to ask members of the audience to leave, then we'll...